Good evening, everybody. This is meeting of the joint meeting of the planning and development subcommittee town council. It's Wednesday, November 2, 2022, 6:00 PM, and this is remote participation only. I am recording it at this time. Chairman has announcements pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter. I think that's, I forgot the name of the chapter, but I think that may be wrong. JOA, I'll check it, subsection 18, and is extended into law on June 16, 2021, Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. This meeting of the planning and development subcommittee is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for the order. In the order, persons who would like to view this meeting, while progress may do so by remote information only, which is below on the agenda, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.ci.southbridge.us soon as we are able. Roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order. So agenda item number one, roll call. Counselor Lazo?
President. President.
Okay. Counselor Dow?
President.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor Adams, president. DeeDee?
Yes.
And Catherine? And I have in the room, right now I have Counselor Marquetti, Counselor Daniel, Michelle Barnes, Peggy Dean, Kathleen Russell, T. M., Rachel. I'm sorry, I can't. Is it Salch?
Yes.
Thank you. If I mess it up, please correct me. S.A.L.C.H., okay? Anybody else I'm missing? Doesn't look like it. All right, agenda item number two will be consider and accept planning and development meeting minutes of September 27, 2022. I need a first and a second, please.
Motion to minutes.
Okay, down. DeeDee is seconded. All right, discussion, any, anything I need to change?
I think I'm up.
All set? Okay, a roll call vote. Counselor Adams, yes. DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Abstain.
And Counselor Dow?
I didn't mean to abstain.
Two zero two. All right, agenda item number three, discuss review whether to recommend town council accept the, I'm sorry, let me get to the regular agenda here. All right, three, discuss the, or view the town manager's recommendation to appoint Michelle Barnes to the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective November 7, 2022 through November 6, 2025 pending successful completion of the state ethics. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council. That is the first one? Miss?
Counselor Lazo, the first.
Oh, got it. So, okay. Discussion. Mr. Town Manager, you just want me to talk about Michelle Barnes, or would you like to?
Well, I'll just give a brief introduction. I'm assuming you can hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I did receive a letter of intent from Michelle Barnes. I know she's on the call. Took a little time. We played phone tag, but I had the opportunity to speak to her, you know, and review her background. She currently works in real estate. She's a Southbridge resident, and the makeup of the Economic Development Commission is one that we can have a mix of residents as well as a non-resident member of the community, which will be coming up later on in the agenda. But based on her interests and what she does in the community and her interest in seeing the economic development interests of the town advance, I think she would be a worthwhile person to move forward and have on the commission. And I know you may be familiar with her, Chairman Adams, and I know she may wish to speak on her own, but I would respectfully request that they may be pushed forward to the full council.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Just want to note that Ms. Barnes had reached out to me after a post on Facebook, asking a few questions, and then volunteered for, wanted to volunteer for one of the boards within our community. And so I provided her a list of some of the boards she picked about, I believe it was five, Michelle, you were interested in doing. Ultimately, the economic side was something that interested her the most. I believe she's interested in a few others, but, but we figured to cut her teeth a little bit on this one. We start off with one and see where it went from this point on. But I, it was great conversation to have. I'm finally, I'm really glad to see you finally in front of us, Ms. Barnes, and, you know, welcome. Is there any questions for Ms. Barnes or for Town Manager or myself? All right, with none. Ms. Barnes, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I hope that we're able to move forward with this. I was born in Southbridge. I lived in Southbridge until middle school, and then I moved away. I've lived in Connecticut, Rhode Island, and New York, and then I moved back to Southbridge in 2010. I have a daughter. She's 17. So, you know, I am invested in this town and, you know, hope that we can make more progress and get it to where it needs to be. I'd love to be a part of that. And I'm very excited for this opportunity, and hopefully we can move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes. Any questions? Okay, so, well, we'll do this. All those in favor will be Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so four zero. Michelle, the, the next meeting, the town council meeting will be on the 7th on Monday. If you can make it, that would be great, but it was great to have you here in front of the subcommittee and give us a little background about yourself. Thank you so much.
You're great. Thank you. Yep.
All right, have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
All right, agenda item number four, discuss review the town manager's recommendations to appoint Kathleen Russell to the non-resident position within the Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective November 7, 2022 to November 6, 2025 pending successful completion. Entertain a motion to recommend. Need a first second, please?
Show move.
Okay. Got it? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I received a letter of intent from Ms. Russell. She's the executive director at the YMCA here in Southbridge, and she is actively involved in the community and has held similar positions previously. We, again, I, it took a little while, but I did connect with her, and I actually had the chance to meet her in person at an event over at RMG. I know she was involved. We met at one of the events for the Bridge Fringe, I think, as well. So she's actively involved in the community and wants to be part of the economic development here in town. You know, a rising tide lifts all boats. So she's intimately involved with a lot of different programs here in the town. So based upon my conversation with her and the fact that we had an opening for a non-resident, I figured she would be a good fit.
I met Ms., Ms. Russell as well at the Bridge Fringe and then Rotary Meeting, and we had a nice conversation. And I don't know, is she on here?
I am. I'm here.
Oh, my gosh, I can't see you right in the middle. Sorry. All right, um, is there, is there any questions for Ms. Russell? This is a non-resident. Where do you live currently?
I, I live in Shrewsbury.
You live in Shrewsbury, but you're active here within the YMCA and part of the bylaw state that we can have somebody vested interest within the town itself. And obviously, being at the YMCA, you've invested. So, questions? Yeah, DeeDee?
When did that bylaw go into effect for a non-resident?
When did it?
Yeah. Has it always been there? I, I don't remember it. That's why I'm just asking.
I, I don't remember when the bylaw was passed, but it is actually in the bylaw itself. I'd have to look that up. I can get back with the committee. That's a question.
That's my only question.
Okay, all right. I can get that information. I just don't know when that bylaw was passed. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Dave, Mr. Counsel. I want to thank Kathleen for that forward, and she don't live in town. Thank you for have that effort and like, you know, you're, you're strong to do that, to come in and lie for the town of Southbridge and you don't live in here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Russell, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, just a little bit about myself. I am new to the area. I relocated here to take this position with the tri-community YMCA. I've been with the YMCA organization for 17 years. So I, I understand the, the rich relationship and impact that YMCA's have on their communities. So I felt that this was an important role for me to be involved with, since our entire purpose is to meet the needs of the community. And as it grows, I would imagine needs would grow as well.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. DeeDee, I'll get back with you. I'm trying to find the date of when that bylaw was passed, though.
Thank you.
All right, no further questions. All those in favor, Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
DeeDee?
I'm sure if I abstain, what do I do? I'm looking for an answer, so do I abstain?
That's really up to you, what you'd like to do. You don't have to abstain, but if you're, yeah, that's really up to you.
Okay, I'll abstain.
Okay. Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams is a yes, is a three zero one. Thank you, Ms. Russell. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, agenda item number five, discuss the town manager's recommendation to appoint Jennifer Boy, I'm going to probably mess this up, Boyard, to state vacancy on the Southbridge Housing Authority for a five-year term effective November 7, 2022 through November 6, 2027, state ethics and good standing. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council for approval. First and second, please. Okay? Okay. Just before we start, I want to make sure I'm saying the right name, Boyard.
And then? I think we say Boilard.
Boilard, okay.
I believe.
All right, and I just wanted to note that this is going to the PND because the EHS did not have a scheduled meeting. So I talked to Ms., our Counsel Ryan, and she was good with that. All right, Mr. Town Manager?
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I received an email a little while back from Ashley Wolf, who's with the Southbridge Housing Authority, and she had indicated that well over six months ago, they had a vacancy on, with the state-appointed member to the Housing Authority, and that they are required then to notify the state of that vacancy. As my understanding is, if the state does not fill that within a six-month period, then this body is allowed to fill that vacancy. And that being the case, according to Ms. Wolf, Ms. Boilard, she's a current member of the Housing Authority, and by filling this, they would take care of that vacancy and be allowed to bring someone back else onto the Housing Authority. I did have the opportunity to speak with Ms. Boilard, and she indicated a willingness. She has been serving on the Housing Authority, and housing is an important issue to her. So she respectfully asked that we advance her name to fill this vacancy and then allow us to then bring someone up into her positions to have a full complement.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Questions? Comments? All right. All those in favor, Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Adams is a yes, four zero. Thank you. I don't think she's on. Is Ms. Boilard there?
I didn't see your name, so I don't.
No.
Okay, all right. Agenda item number six, discuss whether to approve change orders, number one and two, to jam corporations' contract for $12,508.47 funded by the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for the communities or park grant and community development block grant, CDBG-FY21, and extend the contract end date to May 1, 2023. Entertain a motion to recommend town council for approval and authorize the town manager to sign any documents.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager or Ms. Dean?
I will defer to Ms. Dean on these two items, and, you know, I can comment as need be.
Thank you.
Good evening, Counselors. Thank you so much for this remote meeting. The two agenda items, change order one and change order two, I initially put together in the interest of simplicity, and now I regret it. I sincerely apologize. I thought it would be better to put the two together for the total change order of 12,508.47. But as the week progressed, we learned that this change order number two was time-sensitive and that we needed to go forward with it as soon as possible, hence your follow-up special town council meeting for agenda item two. I wonder if the council would want to make a friendly amendment to this agenda item to just address, to just address change order one for the net value of the change order, to increase it by $1,228.47 and extend the contract out. The reason we're able to extend the contract out is because the park grant is good through June of 2023. We were pushing hard for Jam to be able to complete the work initially by December, but because they keep in so low, we have the opportunity to order more equipment and install it as part of the project. It's very exciting. And so we can't, so until we know what the final values are of the, for instance, the lighting I have, and, you know, some of these other details, before we go out for either on the state bid list or for a separate bid altogether. But we're hoping to be able to make the handball court that will be now no longer a handball court, resurface it with playground surfacing, and put a large playground structure on it. Included in that will be a large swing, a single swing, picture a basket almost. It's an ADA-friendly swing. They're wonderful. But it can also be used by anyone, and they're a lot of fun. Initially, we had called for a cheaper $700 ADA swing that was sort of the sensory swing that holds someone in. But it's, in my opinion, it's sort of excludes, you know, it calls out someone with special needs as being the person with special needs that has to use that swing. Being able to have this other swing that's used by anyone becomes a much more inclusive playground object. So that will be traded out, the cheaper swing for $700 will be traded out, and then we'll be adding into the next bid, this more expensive swing. And then the, there was a pole, a random pole that we need to pull out. It's got no power, no light on it, and so it's obsolete. We're going to remove that as part of this change order. And then a separate item for economies of scale, they're already purchasing netting for the handball court over by the Adult Softball League, and one of our CDBG fiscal year 20 items is netting for the Little League softball. And so instead of doing that separate, we can get it for cheaper with this, while they're going out for the netting. And so we've combined the netting, removed the small swing, included the pole, and then it comes out to a net expense of the 1,228.47. And then the contract extension to be able to do this extra work, we're giving them until May 1, because I don't want to be up against the wire with my grant.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Let's address the first thing to the subcommittee. Do you guys want to make it just a change order number one? That'll be on the November 7th town council meeting. We want to make that amendment, since we'll be discussing the special town council this evening for a change order number two.
I'll make the amendment.
Okay, second. All right, all those in favor, Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
DeeDee?
Yes.
Counselor Adams is a yes, four zero. So they're now to that motion right now. Just, you've already discussed it. Are there any discussion to, to the amended motion? Counselor Marquetti?
What motion are you discussing now? There was a whole lot of things there. I was, had a hard time keeping.
I got it. It's going to be change order number one, plus the extension of the contract itself for $1,228.47. We're not addressing the, the $11,000 that we'll be addressing this evening at the town council, special town council meeting.
Oh, you're skipping that. All right.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, Counselor Adams, yes. Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Ms. Laura Shell?
Yes.
This is Laura Shell. All right, four zero.
Thank you.
Welcome. All right. Number seven, discuss whether to accept the proposal from and enter into an agreement with BSC Group to design Quinnabook Valley Rail Trail for $352,000 using Mass Trails grants funds. Entertain a motion to recommend town council for approval and authorize town managers to sign all related documents.
Show move.
Second.
Okay. Lazo, Dow, night. All right, Ms. Dean?
We received two responses to the proposals. BSC Group, who, I'll just remind everyone, did the, the $50,000 feasibility study to line us up for the EDA grant. It was to their credit that we were, in the end, awarded this. And if we are able to hire them, we are, in my opinion, we are that much closer to the design, because they'll be taking all the work they've already done and just putting it forward to the full design. So it was BSC Group that responded, and Par, Par Corporation was the one who had done your baseball field master plan for two-plus million dollars that we never followed through on. And the interaction I'd had with them in the last two years was to try to get updates to some of the pricing on the à la carte items that were listed in their master plan. And I did not have a great string of communication with them related to that experience. The two people that evaluated the RFPs, Mike Brunel and Adriana Robaina, both scored BSC Group higher because of their involvement with the urban agenda, doing the urban renewal plan, and then because of the feasibility study. Not, not to say that either wouldn't do a great job. And in fact, I would argue with BSC Group coming in lower than the amount we have for engineering, we have about an extra $9,000, that I would want to hire maybe a peer reviewer to come in and review their work somewhere as, in a milestone. But I'll bring that to a future meeting. And that would be to assure us, especially in light of, in light of vacancies, and I'm not sure to whom I should look for, for guidance on the expertise for the DEP's best management practices for soil along, soil exposure along rail beds. But another engineering firm might be that ideal fit to be able to review their work on our behalf. So that peer review could come in handy. In the meantime, so that's an aside, I would ask that the town council please consider, or the, the PND subcommittee please consider recommending to the town council they accept BSC Group's proposal for $352,000 to go forward with the Mass Trails award design that will be completed by June for us to go out to bid by June for construction. Within that, yeah, within their RFP requirements, they are required to follow the DEP best management practices. They're required to complete the, the use and applicability form for us to acquire, for us, for us to get the lease with Mast DOT. And they will be doing any kind of public outreach to make sure that citizens' concerns are embedded in our design. So their first action will be to go to the next Trails Committee meeting and get feedback from them right up front.
Thank you. All right. Discussion. Counselor Marquetti?
Mr. Chairman, through you, I know that, I know that we have put in for the rail trail. I'm just wondering, do we know if we have the rail trail grant yet? I mean, everybody's pretty confident we're going to get it, but it, do we have it? Is it written, all right, within stone that we've gotten the grant for the rail trail?
The EDA, well, I could let Ms. Dean answer, but Mr. Chair, we, we did, I have letters of commitment, you know, from the EDA. They announced that we received it. And I, I know that we've executed the paperwork, the appropriate paperwork. It's come through my office. I know Ms. Dean worked on it. And we have a similar commitment through Mast DOT. I know from my end, we've seen some of that paperwork. Ms. Dean could elaborate a little bit more. But we, I do believe we shared some of the announcements with the council that we did, we, we were awarded it, and I believe we submitted the necessary paperwork to, to secure the funding, as you often do with a grant. Ms. Dean, do you, is there anything else you can add to that?
Yes. So you, yep, you received your EDA grant. You entered into the contract. You've actually done your first quarter reporting, your first biannual financial reporting. We've actually submitted a budget amendment to ask that all the EDA funds be pushed to construction and that we solely use the Mass Trails money for the design, which allows us to then invite BSC Group to participate in the proposal process. So then with Mass Trails, we've already entered into an agreement, had a notice to proceed, and we had a kickoff meeting remotely and have been given the green light to go ahead. They've been provided the RFPs. So everyone's on board and the, you know, we, we have lined ourselves up for us to be able to take advantage of BSC Group's already existing work. I can't say that was an easy process. It was a back and forth for about three weeks for us to finally get permission from EDA to, to do this budget amendment. So we've been working hard behind the scenes.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Counselor Marquetti, do you have any follow-up questions or concerns?
So is that all there is to it? I mean, I thought there was some, some further things that had to happen in order for this to happen. We had to take control of the land. Mast DOT has to be involved, giving us the rail itself, and all of that has happened. So that's all taken place. We are now owners of the land.
Ms. Dean?
That's all I have. Thank you.
It's a good question.
It is. It's a very good question. Thank you for letting me address it. Within the EDA grant, it states that before we enter into construction, we have to have a good title of the land or lease of the land. And so what will happen is, the design phase will design it towards those DEP best management practices. They will fill out the use and applicability, or whatever the form is called, the use and access form, or use and access application through DOT. We'll then get, once we submit that application, we'll get a sample or a lease back from DOT or MBTA. Then we'll bring the lease to you, and that will, we will have our town attorneys review the, the lease and verify that, yes, this will put us in good title for the land. You'll, you'll accept the lease at that point. They'll, it'll take about two months for the EDA to give the green light for us to proceed, and then we'll be able to bid for construction. And so we're asking BSC Group to really finish up the design by April, so that we have about two months to play with for securing the lease.
You okay with that, Counselor Marquetti? Or any follow-ups? Okay. Any other discussion? First of all, I just want to say thank you, Ms. Dean, for following up on everything, and what an amazing job you've done. And we're looking forward to it. A lot of people are excited about this project. So thank you for all the work you and the town manager and the staff have done. All right, okay, all those in favor, Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Shell?
Yes.
Counselor Adams is a yes. Agenda item number eight, discuss whether to approve the request for a timely expenditure waiver for Department of Housing and Community Development for CDBG fiscal year 20 grant year to allow the town of Southbridge to apply for an upcoming CDBG-FY22 and FY23 opportunity. year to allow the town of Southbridge to apply for an upcoming CDBG-FY22 and FY23 opportunity. Entertain a motion to recommend Town Council for approval and authorize Town Manager to sign all related paperwork or documents.
Toma.
Thank you. I don't want to mess up the order anymore. So, Ms. Dean?
Yes, thank you. You have had these requests from me for the last two application rounds I've been involved with. Unfortunately, because we continue to lag behind with construction and supply chain issues, are, we are not spending down our grants as quickly as DHC would like. They understand that we are at the behest of the markets and beyond our, things beyond our control, therefore they allow for these waivers. And so we, we just have to have it approved and submit it as part of our application process.
Are we the only town that's doing this, or is it, is it multiple towns that are, you know, who receive the mini entitlement funds?
There, there are certainly other towns that are in this boat. Yes, I think that they mentioned that when they looked at where other towns were, and so it was plural, for sure.
Thank you. Discussion. All right, all those in favor, Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
This is Laurishel?
Yes.
Counsel Adams is yes, four zero. Thank you again for the follow-up on that. All right. All right, number nine, discuss whether to allow the Economic Development and Planning Department to accept the lowest quote to furnish and install two awnings at 300 Main Street for not more than $10,814. Entertain a motion to recommend the Town Council for approval and authorize Town Manager to sign all related documents.
Toma.
Second.
Yep. Ms. Dean?
Did the end of that motion state approval from contingent on approval, pending approval for the Massachusetts Historical Commission?
Entertain a motion to recommend Town Council for approval and to authorize TM to sign all related documents.
And we're on 300, me?
300 Main.
Okay. So it's not, it's not important. I will not submit it until I get Massachusetts Historical Commission's approval, is essentially what it was just saying at the end.
So do we need to put that in the pending motion for Monday night?
You don't have to. I, I would just not submit it until I get that approval. That's fine.
Well, I'll, what I'll do is I'll just make it, I'll make, make a change of that. Counsel Lazo?
Chairman, a question to beg. Are these colors the colors that were picked? The lime green that I'm seeing on this printout? Who picked the colors?
So the McCarthy's picked the colors. They were brought to the historical, our local historical commission. They were approved by our local historical commission. They were brought to the Mass Historical Commission because they are a, it's a historic building, and because we're using federal funds under the HUD guidelines, we have to get the Mass Historical Commission's approval. And so they don't care about the color or design per se. They want to, they wanted to know whether it was going to compromise the integrity of the historical building. So that's why I have that letter in there that talks about what kind of mounting it will be using, the flush mounted awnings with the brackets.
I understood the construction portion of it, and I understood the historical portion of it. I just looked at the colors there a little bit loud for Main Street, but if that, if everybody's on board, I'm all set.
If you, if you look at the color of the, the headers, right, there's the, the color inside the, the header there of all the windows, it's that same lime green color. So you've got that little bit of accent around all the windows, and then you've got it coming down on the, the awnings. I think it'll look pretty sharp.
Okay, thank you.
But it's not my preference, right? We don't say anything about design or color. That is not our necessarily, you know, our business.
Thank you, Counsel Lazo. Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I agree. I think the colors are wrong. Doesn't look very historical to me. It was bright green colors. I thought that was just to maybe point out where they were going to be. These don't really look like the type of awnings that usually go in a downtown area, especially downtown Southbridge. That's my opinion. I know that when we did the signs around town, they picked some really strange colors that really didn't go with the look of the downtown area. Second of all, I take it that the town manager is issuing a permit for these awnings in accordance with our bylaws. Our bylaws say that in order to construct an awning, you must have a permit from the town manager. The awnings cannot be less than seven feet above ground and can't extend into the street. So I take it all of that has been taken care of?
Mr. Town Manager?
I don't recall seeing a permit for this yet, so I'm not sure. I would have to investigate that between now and Monday, whether one was sent through my office or sent, you know, through inspections, as they are often the agents of the town to handle things. So I, I would have to look. I'm not, that, that's the first time I've heard of it. So I would have to do some research on that.
Would I help?
All right, thank you.
Ms. Dean?
The, the reason, the, the language in the motion states a, you know, allow us to accept the lowest quote to furnish and install. So we've gone out just for the cost estimate. And in the interest of time, I have to finish this grant by the end of December. I'm up against the wire, and I, I do not want us to have to ask for one more grant extension just to spend down $19,000. I think we can do this. The way we're approaching it is if you give us permission to go ahead with accepting the lowest quote, quote, we know we have at least enough funds to accept Graphics Unlimited quote for the 10-814. Should someone come in lower and we have extra funds, then we come to you towards the end of the grant and we ask for it to be transferred into a different line. Otherwise, we have to surrender the funds. And then when Graphics Unlimited or whoever is hired goes to do the awning, at that time, they pull the permit with the town and make sure that they cover their bases. And it is, it is designed to the town's bylaws and ADA requirements.
Well, I'm just looking at the code of bylaws on directing an awning on a building downtown. They have to get permit from the town manager. I don't think it would take that, I don't think it would be that much work to get, just get a permit to the town manager. Probably could have that done before the Town Council meeting, actually. But thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Marquetti. Ms. Dean?
If, if the Town Council would understand the order of operations would be that the permit would be pulled by the company that we hire, then if we could wait until the work is done, I can ensure that whoever does the work, we will ask them to pull the permit through the town manager.
That's normal protocol anyways. Once it's all, it's contracted out, it's about the work, they get the permits. So at that point in time, they utilize, they don't usually pull permits beforehand, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, any other discussion? Yes, Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Ms. Dean, can we do anything in the future to certain color for the lease downtown Main Street like this? We don't have all different colors and not fit the downtown or the color with the town because seems like, hopefully nobody took me in the wrong way. See, like everything is a blue and yellow. I mean, Southbridge is not blue and yellow.
Ms. Dean?
You have within your urban renewal plan suggested downtown design guidelines that were never adopted as full design guidelines. And within that, it calls for the body to be composed of a member of multiple different boards, and then for you to comply with these, to ensure that any downtown development complies with these design guidelines. That's the closest thing I can think of to being able to exercise any power over people's choices and their private investments. I understand we're giving them money. I guess we could, we could, we could tie requirements to our, our, our commercial rehab, saying that, you know, if we are doing commercial rehab in the future, if we have adopted the downtown design guidelines, we would make sure that they adhere to those. And that, that would be, you know, something we could incorporate into a future grant round, but we would need to make sure we create that body. And, and that's one of those to-dos that was, you know, that I would love to see happen anyway.
Can I respond?
Keep going.
To take the people's choice, but I think we can do kind of by law for the downtown certain color or certain design to be done. Leave in Main Street front of stores, you know? Some towns have that.
All right, go ahead, Counsel Lazo.
Quick second. I'm, I'm just going to reflect back to when we were an all-American city. I don't know how the town did it because at that point I was in high school. But what they did was all the signage and trim on every front of every building was compatible all the way down Main Street, and they got rid of all of the neon lighting that was coming off the buildings, and they went into more of a, a cape card looking, hanging with the indirect lights coming down on the sign. I don't know how they pulled that off, whether it was the Historical Society, Downtown Partnership, or the council, but we voted all-American city with the downtown area all being coordinated in colors, lighting, and different regulations. Like, I don't want government to sit on somebody owns a building, but when you, when you drive by a Main Street, it's the personality of your community. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have no way of raising my hand. And often in communities, the local historic district commission can regulate certain things on the, the facades, colors and otherwise. And I, I believe there was a, we did a, I don't know that we have a historic district committee as of yet or a commission. I know there was a historic district committee study, but I don't know that we have the ability to regulate the colors through, but that is one mechanism that I've seen it done before.
Anything else? Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Sorry, vote. Yeah, Counsel Lazo. Yeah, Counsel Dow?
Yes.
This is Laurishel?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams, yes. Thank you. Number 10, discuss whether to allow Economic Development and Department to accept the lowest quote to furnish and install one awning at 53 Central Street for not more than $8,543.46. Entertain a motion to recommend Town Council for approval and authorize Town Manager to sign any documents. I'm assuming that has to also state for the Historic Commission?
No, this is not a Historic Commission.
Okay, this is not. Okay, good. All right, thank you. Ms. Dean?
Yes, I stand corrected. In my memo, I stated this was a cost estimate from Graphics Unlimited. This was a cost estimate from Jimmy Keys from Economy Canvas to be able to extend the awning out all the way along the, you have a diagram that shows the highlighted area. We initially planned to do it to the end of his, his walkway there for deliveries or for, you know, back entrance access to be protected from the weather. We're not sure how, quite yet, if it's going to extend all the way or if it's going to be four feet short. We're still working out the details, but we at least know, again, that we have a price from them that we would be able to fall within. And again, if for some reason we're able to get a cheaper quote and we have extra funds, then we could come back to you before the grant is over in December to make sure that either the funds are transferred or we have to turn them back.
Okay. Okay, discussion. So we'll need to update the, just the, the memo, if you don't mind, Ms. Dean. And then, any questions, discussion on this one? All those in favor, Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurishel?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams is yes. Most to adjourn?
Toma.
Second.
All those in favor, Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurishel?
Yes.
Counsel Adams is yes. Thank you very much. You guys all have a good evening.